The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Kohn, Alderman Orion, Alderman Devote, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Sanye, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Keys, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Boyd,
Present.
Alderman Aldridge, President Green.
Present.
Alderman Devote, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Tyus. Eleven present, you have quorum.
A quorum being present, we will dispense with line items three and four. And introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests. Alderwoman from the tenth.
Ladies and members of the board, I would like to have as my honored guest today, Miss Kathy Hadley, Lady Kathley Hadley, the life of the parley Kathy Hadley. Today is her birthday. She calls herself in retirement, but I still see her in the community service, not just through her decades of work through the Urban League, but so many other organizations and the guilt that she pours into. So Kathy Hadley says, I pray you enjoy your day, have the happiest birthday. I can't wait to see you and come, what they saying on social media, now turn it up. Have a good day.
A further introduction of honored guests. Seeing none, Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on approval of the minutes from Tuesday, July 2nd, 2025.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, I move that we approve the minutes from Tuesday, July 2nd, 2025.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we approve the minutes from Tuesday, July 2nd, 2025. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, C, and D of the agenda and has been placed in the Google Drive for your review. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals to the Tower Grove South Concerned Citizens Special Business District. The appointment of Carrie Coller, who resides in the sixth ward. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Kara Spencer, Mayor.
Alderwoman from the sixth, you are recognized on Mayor Spencer's appointment to the Tower Grove South Concerned Citizens Special Business.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we approve the appointment for the Tower Grove South Concerned Citizens Special Business.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the sixth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth. We approve Mayor Spencer's appointment to the Tower Grove South Concerned Citizens Special Business District. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendar? Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendar? Seeing none, we can dispense with line items nine through eleven. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 52, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, and ordinance repealing ordinance number 71664 concerning the issuance of liquor licenses and enacting a new ordinance prohibiting the issuance of any package or drink liquor license for any currently non-licensed premises within the boundaries of the 13th Ward Liquor Control District, except for those areas specifically described in Section 3, which shall be excluded from and shall not be a part of the 13th Ward Liquor Control District and shall not be subject to the moratorium provisions of this ordinance for a period of five years from the effective date hereof, containing exceptions and a line during the moratorium period for the transfer of existing licenses under certain circumstances and the issuance of a drink license for persons operating a restaurant at the previously non-licensed premises containing an emergency clause and a severability clause. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to Committee of Board Bills.
To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 52. That's the extent of reference to Committee of Board Bills.
Second reading, report of standing committees.
The following board bill was reported out, board bills were reported out of public, I'm sorry, public infrastructure with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 48, sponsored by Alderman Aldridge, President Green, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller of the City of St. Louis to execute a permanent irrevocable easement substantially in the form attached hereto as Exhibit 1, which shall give, grant, extend, and confer on the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District its agents, successors, and assigns the exclusive right to build, maintain a sewer or sewers, including stormwater improvements on the strip or strips of ground described therein, authorizing and directing the president of the Board of Public Service of the city to enter into a maintenance agreement substantially in the form attached hereto as Exhibit 2 with MSD regarding such sewer and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 50, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in the 20-foot-wide north-south alley in City Block 706 as bounded by Carroll Street, Casagio Street, Lafayette Avenue, and Second Street in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after describing accordance with Charter authority and in conformity with Section 1.4 of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 51, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, pursuant to ordinance number 70333 as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic in the first ward. The following board bill was reported out of public safety with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 43, sponsored by Alderman Orion, an ordinance establishing a policy to govern the purchase and demolition of seven home properties in the Ellendale neighborhood in accordance with the requirements of the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program funding awarded by the State of Missouri Emergency Management Agency and containing a severability clause. The following board bill was reported out of HUSS Committee with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 42, sponsored by Alderman Kohn, President Green, Alderwoman Switzer, Alderwoman Sanye, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Aldridge, and Alderwoman Keys, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission amending Chapter 26 of the Zoning Code, adjusting a minimum lot size or density of population regulation for the single-family dwellings and some two-family dwellings and containing a severability and an emergency clause. That's the extent of second reading, report of standing committees.
Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Please place Board Bill 51 on the informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Will you please place Board Bill 43 on the informal calendar?
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Alderman from the fourteenth, you are recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bills 48, 50, 43, and 42 to the perfection consent, sorry, not 43 anymore, 48, 50, and 42 to the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to suspend the rules to move Board Bill 48, 50, and 42 to the perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the Alderman from the second, that we suspend the rules to move Board Bills 48, 50, and 42 to the perfection consent calendar. This is a non-debatable motion. Alderwoman from the twelfth.
No, I'm sorry, Madam President. I have a request to take something off the consent calendar. So my hand was up after that.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, that's a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Kohn. Alderman Orion. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanye. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Devote. Thirteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the fourteenth. If you could please place those aforementioned bills on the perfection consent calendar. And at this time, I will recognize Alderwoman twelfth. Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Madam President, if you could take Board Bills 44 and 45 off the consent calendar, please.
Sorry, you broke up for a second. Could you repeat those board bill numbers?
Forty-four and forty-five.
Madam Clerk, if you could please move Board Bills 44 and 45 to the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Alderman from the ninth.
Hello, there we go. If we could move Board Bill 25, committee substitute as amended in committee, to the regular consent calendar.
Madam Clerk, please.
Or sorry, the regular perfection calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Any further? Seeing none, report of special committee.
We have none.
Board Bills for perfection consent.
Board Bill 18, sponsored by Alderwoman Velazquez, President Green, Alderwoman Sanye, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Keys, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance amending ordinance number 71835 to codify interior requirements for residential rentals by striking out all mentions of Exhibit A and inserting a new section named interiors of building that replicates the contents of Exhibit A and provides additional specifications related to occupancy load. Board Bill 47, sponsored by Alderman Browning, President Green, Alderwoman Switzer, Alderman Kohn, Alderwoman Sanye, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Keys, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Esmen and Apportement authorized into the City of St. Louis to execute and accept a sub award for the Bloomberg Philanthropies American Sustainability Cities Initiative in amount of $120,000 from John Hopkins University appropriating such funds to the planning and urban design agency, authorizing the expenditure of such funds to the extent received, authorizing contract agreements and other documents to expand such funds containing a severability clause. Excuse me, Board Bill 40, sponsored by Alderman Kohn, and ordinance authorizing the execution of a lease agreement between the City of St. Louis, Missouri, and the City of St. Louis Port Authority for certain real properties being improved or for the purpose of maintaining, beautifying, improving the premises and controlling a controlled system of paved parking for a period of 25 years as set forth in the lease agreement attached hereto as Exhibit A containing a severability clause. Board Bill 48, sponsored by Alderman Aldridge and President Green, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller of the City of St. Louis to execute a permanent irrevocable easement substantially in the form attached hereto as Exhibit 1, which shall give, grant, extend, and confer on the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District its agents, successors, and assigns the exclusive right to build and maintain a sewer or sewers, including stormwater improvements on the strip or strips of ground described herein, authorizing and directing the president of the Board of Public Service of the city to enter into a maintenance agreement substantially in the form attached hereto as Exhibit 2 with MSD regarding such sewer and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 45. No, I'm sorry, Board Bill 50. Board Bill 50, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, and pedestrian travel in north-south alley in City Block 706 as bounded by Carroll Street, Casagio Street, Lafayette Avenue, and Second Street in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described in accordance with the Charter authority and in conformity with Section 1.4 of Article 21 of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill 42, sponsored by Alderman Kohn, President Green, Alderwoman Switzer, Alderwoman Sanye, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and Alderwoman Keys, and Alderman Aldridge, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission amending Chapter 26 of the Zoning Code, adjusting minimum lot size or density of population regulation for the single-family dwellings and some two-family dwellings containing a severability and emergency clause. That's the extent of board bills for perfection consent calendar.
Board Bills for, sorry. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the board bills for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the board bills for perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we adopt the board bills for the perfection consent calendar. Is there any question? Alderman from the third. Sorry, we can't hear you.
Would help if the microphone were turned on. Can we make sure that Board Bill 25 is committee substituted as amended, is not on perfection consent?
Yes, we moved that already to perfection. It's been moved by the Alderman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh. We adopt the board bills for the perfection consent calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Board Bills for perfection.
Board Bill 44, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, President Green, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Sanye, Alderwoman Keys, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance directing the Neighborhood Stabilization Division to establish a registration process and a registration database for registered neighborhoods organization in the City of St. Louis and establish an eligibility criteria for neighborhood organization applicants including a severability clause.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 44.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we perfect Board Bill 44.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eleventh, that we perfect Board Bill 44. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Before I open up to questions from some of my colleagues, I just want to, here since I have the opportunity, thank the countless meetings, conversations, organizations, groups that came together and worked together to bring this to now Board Bill 44. The work that you all have done has not gone in vain since notably before COVID, when they first started meeting about this. First recognizing the need for this, and then again, working together to find a pathway of, a pathway of this communication between our residents and city services, our residents and city departments, our residents and these very valuable notifications. Just the email, but it's the email of empowerment to our people. And so with that, I'll again, hopefully move forward and hopefully we'll be able to count on my colleagues' support for Board Bill 44.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Is the Alderwoman from the eleventh there?
Yes, she is.
If, would she yield questions, please?
Would the Alderwoman from the eleventh yield questioning from the Alderwoman from the twelfth?
Eleven.
Yes. Nope.
Testing. All right, I am ready.
You will yield?
Yes, I will yield to questions.
Alderwoman from the twelfth, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Alderwoman, I know you're not the primary sponsor of the bill, but I have a few questions. You are one of the sponsors of the bill. And so I have a few questions for you, because I know you've had to deal with some difficult neighborhood organizations during your tenure here. So I have questions about, I think you represent, I want to say Vander Venter. What's the organization that includes Vander Venter that's in your ward?
Is that, no, not Vander Venter, but I believe Pen. Is that, um, no, not Vander Venter, but I believe Pen-
No, 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 no. The one that's got like three names to it, um, Fairgrounds, Neighborhood, I can't even remember what-
Covenant Blue Grand Center.
Right, Covenant Blue Grand Center, right, okay. And is that a neighborhood organization that covers the boundaries of Covenant Blue and Grand Center? Is that what why it's named that?
Correct.
Okay, and are those boundaries, uh, do the two neighborhoods have anything to do with one another except for the fact that they are adjacent?
They actually have the same, yes, they actually have the same leadership. Ms. Audrey Ellerman is involved heavily in both of those.
Right, but are they the same neighborhoods?
No, they're not the same. Right, I got you.
I'm saying Grand Center is more of a business kind of neighborhood, is it?
That is true to a degree. They are also, they're residents there as well.
Okay, so it's both Grand Center, the business district, and Grand Center, the residence? That's what I'm trying to find out.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's, okay, and then Covenant Blue, is that business and resident or what?
It is mostly residential, but there are businesses as well.
Okay, all right, and so, um, that's what I wanted to know. I wasn't quite sure, because I didn't want to go someplace else without making sure that I understood that. So, in this, um, I'm looking at page four of five, um, which is, um, Section Three Eligibility to Register. A neighborhood organization is eligible to register if it satisfies the following minimum criteria. And I guess my real concern is about overlapping neighborhoods. That's why I wanted to ask you about that, because in my years of being on the board, overlapping neighborhoods didn't work out very well, because they were different neighborhoods and had different things. So how does that work? I wanted you to tell me how that works with Covenant Blue and Grand Center. What happens if Grand Center has a different idea of something that should happen than Covenant Blue? Has that been your experience at all?
Well, unfortunately, we've not, or fortunately, we've not had that situation to occur yet. And let's hope that we don't. Those organizations have been working very well together collaboratively. And they meet regularly and include community input for everything that they are doing. So I would say at this point in time, both organizations working together in tandem are doing very well.
Okay, so that's good, if they're working together. But if there were ever a problem, I'm wondering how that works, okay? But that's good, if it hasn't been. Also, I want to ask about eligibility to register, Part B, and talks about what's eligible. It has a geographic, it says a neighborhood organization is eligible to register if it satisfies the following minimum criteria. It has a geographic boundary, and those boundaries include not more than five city neighborhoods in accordance with the citywide neighborhood map maintained by the planning division. And I'm trying to figure out, how is that a neighborhood organization when you're starting to talk about five city neighborhoods that you don't even say have to be adjacent or to one another? How does that become, that to me, becomes something different than a neighborhood organization? And I'm just wondering what your thoughts were about that.
Hmm, you know, I had not really given that a lot of consideration. I would say at this point in time, everything seems to be flowing very well. And we won't know how the organizations or communities will be affected until we reach that place of impasse.
Well, so, do you have any organizations that have five city neighborhoods that cover? Because the only thing I could think of, of organization that covers five city neighborhoods would be something like the Urban League or SLICO. Do you have any organizations that cover five city neighborhoods?
No, no, I don't have any situations like those. And when, and I just want to be clear, are you talking about non-for-profit organizations? Or are you talking about community organizations such as the Fairground Neighborhood Association or the Penrose Neighborhood Association, or JBL for that matter?
That's what, all those that I know, like, I've dealt with Penrose for thirty-three years now. I've dealt with Kingsway East-West, because they're as, for thirty-three years. I've dealt with Wells Goodfellow, Mark Twain for twenty-something, okay? But when I look at Section Three Eligible to Register, a neighborhood organization is eligible to register if it satisfies the following minimum criteria. And one of the things it has in here is it can have a geographic boundaries that includes not more than five citywide city neighborhoods. That's not a neighborhood organization to me at that point. That is something else, okay? Neighborhood organizations, and I come from one, that's why I'm asking you about it. I actually came from the Kingsway East-West Neighborhood Organization about a Domino's Pizza. And that's how I got into politics, about zoning, about the lack of notice. And so, when I see no more than five city neighborhoods, the whole point when we did redistricting was to keep neighborhoods together so that they could have their own autonomy. Now you're saying that you could register as a neighborhood organization if you have up to five city neighborhoods, not even saying that they have to be adjacent, which I don't think that that's a neighborhood organization. That's a whole other thing that we're, um, we're setting up for problems, okay? That's somebody who wants to be in charge of things and wants to run things without running for office. When you're starting to get to five city neighborhoods, that's a ward. That could be a whole ward. That's not a neighborhood organization, okay? That's my problem, looking at this bill right here, not more than five. Then you don't say that it has to be adjacent. Well, um, for years, SLICO tried to get into North St. Louis, and they couldn't get into it. They would try, 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 and they had very small ability, because the Urban League worked very hard when other people did not have anything to do with North St. Louis. And so the Urban League, under Mr. Bill Slaton and others, organized North St. Louis, and they had, and still have, Urban League, um, uh, neighborhood groups and block units. And they've done a really good job with that. SLICO would try to come in, they would have a few people coming in, and they always had some people that did not even live in the neighborhood trying to run the neighborhood. So when I see that a neighborhood organization can have a membership of, um, five different neighborhoods, and it doesn't say anything about them having to live in that neighborhood or have anything to do with that neighborhood, to me, that sets up something different. And I was, since your name was on it, I wanted to see, kind of see your thoughts, if you had thought about that at all.
Yes, um, and I see where you're going and what you're saying. I might suggest maybe a friendly amendment to the Board Bill if the Alderwoman of the tenth ward would be amenable to that.
Oh, I hear you, okay. I just, I value your opinion. Hadn't had time to speak to you about this bill. So, had a family emergency, just got back from late last night, but had gone over that and just saw your name on it and wanted to know just if you really, really thought five city neighborhoods. I represent twelve neighborhoods, and that's a ward now that we have this big thing that we call fourteen wards, which is still a mistake for North St. Louis. I don't know about the other parts of the city, but it's a mistake for North St. Louis. But for an organization to say, now they are all of a sudden being a registered organization, to me, that's a slap in the face of the neighborhood organizations that do not have that kind of a, uh, bandwidth with the city, who sometimes organize. We had Kingsway East and West, and we were doing housing, and then this zoning problem came up. We tried to talk to our alderperson and state reps and state senators, and they would listen. And so, we formed, not as something that was registered with the city, but it's something that formed esoterically from within the neighborhood that we lived in, which were Kingsway East and West, because it affected both neighborhoods. But in no way did we think that somebody from Penrose, who was part of our ward, or for somebody who might live in the Shaw neighborhood, could have something to say or be so interested in our neighborhood that they would be able to get some kind of favorable standing to have a registration as a neighborhood organization. So, that's just my concern. And I'm putting you on the spot, but as I said, I value your opinion. And so I just wanted to hear what your thoughts, and what you're saying is that you really hadn't really delved into that maybe as much as I'm doing right now, is that what the thing is?
Correct, but the concern or the question that I would have is, is there anything that precludes five neighborhood, let's say in my ward, okay? Let's say that all of to have their neighborhood organization, but they wanted to all come together and create a new neighborhood organization where all four, five of those, or six of those are coming together under one umbrella? You know, I don't know the, all of the nuances of, you know, how these things are operated, but I certainly would welcome if all of those organizations would decide to create a new organization under one umbrella, and how powerful that could possibly be for the community or ward as a whole.
And so I guess I'm different from that, because they, different neighborhoods have different thoughts of things that they want. When you provide a big organization like that, even though I've been the alderperson for thirty-some years, when I do certain things in the ward, and I've told you that, I actually send out, uh, uh, letters. I have petitions, I petition streets even, is this what you want? Because what happens, the further away somebody gets from something, the more they think it's all right for something and don't see the problem in it. But the whole point of setting up the neighborhood organizations, they're right there around what's going on. And so that is why you want it to be local. The larger we get, the less influence the local people have. We've seen that now with these wards becoming big, okay? We have less influence in North St. Louis. We basically have three people that represent most of North St. Louis, okay? And that isn't the way the Board of Aldermen should have been set up to be and shouldn't have been changed to be like that. The larger you get, unless you have four action-oriented neighborhood organizations, that may not be registered. And then what is the whole point if you're going to have that? What do you have the Board of Aldermen for? That's what an Alderman is for. You register five, you have five, six, seven, eight neighborhoods. So if this organization comes along and they're saying, okay, we're working together, but are they really? Because the other part that I've seen is many of the organizations have a few people, and they don't have a real group of people working together. And if certain people get a hold of them, they take a position that's adverse to the neighborhood. And we've had that on many occasions, when people have decided they were the head of an organization, and the neighborhood is like, we don't know anything about who these people are. We do not agree with them. We have one right here in Kingsway West, right to this day, I can name the name. And four or five people go to that meeting, and that person proposes to be the head of a neighborhood organization, but he is not. He is a member of SLICO, but he is not the head of any kind of organization. And he even quit when he started to ask questions. And then came back and just said he was the head again. So, my concern is, if you're trying to have people have influence in the neighborhood, the bigger that you get, the less influence that the neighborhoods have. That's what my concern is. Yes, you can work together, but if you decide this neighborhood is going to take a position for Penrose, Kingsway East, Kingsway West, Goodfellow, Shaw, uh, what's the, uh, Baden? And then the people in Baden say, we don't want this. The people in Penrose say, we don't want this. But there's this recognized neighborhood organization. And again, I say, when you say you're going to have five city neighborhoods, and it doesn't say that these neighborhoods have to be working together, it says that if a neighborhood organization is organized and they can represent up to five city neighborhoods, that could be anybody. I don't want to recognize that person, because I've seen this work to the detriment of the neighborhood. And in fact, I want you to know, that's how I got in politics again, because the person who they sent to our neighborhood to tell us about what a great thing it would be to have that Domino's at Maffet and Kings Highway, and we're all saying, no, we don't want it. And our rank swelled to two-hundred, not from organization, from within the city, from within our neighborhood, saying, we don't want it there, it's going to be dangerous. They put it there anyway, it was dangerous. Then they moved it to Kings Highway and Martin Luther King, which was where we totally should have been in the first place, but we had to put up with years of going after it. But it was people from the outside who purported to represent our neighborhood, who didn't live there, who had nothing to do, and we don't have anything about residency or anything here. I don't see how they represent my neighborhood any better than me, who has already been vetted and put on the, uh, have been able to be voted for on multiple occasions. What is the Alderman for then? If you're going to have five neighborhoods that can just get together and say, this is what we want? And at what point, who do we, who do we listen to? Who, and we being the city? If they show up and they're saying, we want this, and what about the neighborhoods? The people living in the neighborhoods say, we don't know who they are, and they don't represent us? When you put your name out to be elected, then they know who Laura Keys is. How do we know these people? And how do we know anything about who they represent? And who's talking to them?
I certainly understand your concern. However, I must defer to the, the bill's sponsor.
I understand, and I will get to her.
So, with that, do you have any more questions that I, that I can actually answer?
I beg your pardon, okay, I understand. As I said before, because I saw your name on it. I wanted to have this, uh, I told you, I respect you. I think you are a fair person and a thinker. That's why I'm asking you these questions. I don't necessarily maintain that idea for some of the people who carry things. I don't think they think things out. I don't hear the long-term planning in this. I see a long-term planning in this, and it's political. I also just want to tell you that part of the problem I have with this bill, and I'm going to vote no on this bill, is because the very people who are supposed to put it into effect is the Neighborhood Stabilization Program. That is a joke in my community, okay? So, to me, they need to, how can they even put something together when they have so many problems going on? And I will address that later. And I just, I guess, um, do you know why we didn't have them bring a plan in the first place? Because this thing is saying, now we're going to send it to them, and they're going to have a plan. Why wouldn't you have the Neighborhood Organization Stabilization Program bring a plan in the first place and saying, this is our plan, this is what we're trying to do? And then present it to the Board so we can see the full scope of things? Is there a reason that that wouldn't have happened, that you know of?
Not that I'm familiar with. I've not heard anything like that.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. I won't put you on the spot anymore.
Thank you, Alderwoman.
If the Alderwoman from the thirteenth would yield?
Would the Alderwoman from the thirteenth yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the twelfth? Alderwoman from the thirteenth?
I'm coming, computer issue. Okay, here I am.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth, will you yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the twelfth?
Yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Alderwoman, I appreciate it. So, I've been talking about page four, Section Three, the eligibility to register to be a neighborhood organization. How many neighborhoods does the thirteenth ward cover now, do you know?
About eight.
Okay, so, but they're very, you have one of the largest, the most diverse wards, even more so than mine, the city, because you go from Chain of Rocks Bridge to up on Page, right? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, right. So, and representing these different neighborhoods, do you believe all your neighborhoods have the same issues? I mean, they may be in North St. Louis, a part of North St. Louis, but do you think that the people in Wells Goodfellow know what's good for North Point?
No, that's apple and oranges.
Exactly, okay? People don't know that, because in North St. Louis, they think we're monolithic. They're all monolithic. We, let's just put low-income housing. I went to Baden to a meeting, and the people gave me almost a standing ovation, because they said, Alderwoman, we heard you say, what about the people in North St. Louis that work in middle class and middle income and upper income? And they were just ecstatic, because if in this city, they would have you believe many of us who live in North St. Louis are begging all the time and are not protective citizens, and we're so monolithic. And so, how do you see five neighborhoods, city neighborhoods, that could be? And again, it doesn't say five neighborhoods are right there together. How can people who have a neighborhood in Shaw, maybe? A neighborhood in Tower Grove, maybe? A neighborhood in Penrose, cover these? How can they be registered as a neighborhood organization when they don't even know what the neighborhood's about? And there's no requirement that they live in North Point? How could they make any decisions about North Point? Or what does that mean for them? Or what does that mean for them to be a registered neighborhood organization if they don't live in the community? How could I tell the people in North Point what's good for them? And I've been an Alderperson for a long time, but how do I tell them what's good for them? And I don't live there and I don't know their issues. You would know their issues. Isn't that correct?
Correct, one hundred percent.
So in my neighborhood, I have Kingsway East, Kingsway West, Penrose, Vander Venner, Ville, Greaterville, just going on. So if five of my neighborhoods got together and said, we want to be a registered neighborhood organization, but we want to represent North Point, does that make any sense to you?
No, that, that's not gonna make any sense. And we continuously keep saying that people can't speak for their neighborhoods if they don't live there. So you can't speak for Shaw neighborhood. I don't live over there. So I don't know what their needs and what their desires are over there. So people can't speak for Baden because they don't know the needs of the people in Baden.
Exactly. So you and I share Baden, but you've been representing the area a lot longer than me with Baden and North Point and all that. So you know a lot more than I'm learning that. But you know a lot more. If you ask me about Penrose, Kingsway East, Kingsway West, I know that. Okay, also you know, because you know about the neighborhoods, where I live is Kingsway East. Twenty years ago, they tore my neighborhood up. Beautiful middle class, upper middle class neighborhood. They put part of it in the, with the people on the Bill of Fourth Ward. That part of my neighborhood, which now has been hit by the tornado, but before the tornado, went to the dogs because they took a very different group of people and put them in a neighborhood where they didn't get any services for twenty something years. They were part of the fourth war, but they got absolutely nothing. Okay, so it tore my neighborhood up and that was done on purpose. And when I got it back years ago, before this tornado came, we were already tearing down ten and twenty houses on the block. When you could just go across Euclid and tell the different, drive down Euclid, where I live, you could say, oh, that's where they've always been. Drive down Marcus and look up there and say, what happened to that? What happened to that is people who think they know what's good for other people pass legislation or do things that hurt our neighborhoods, okay? Going back to when we were the twenty-seventh ward, twenty-first ward, twentieth ward, first ward, second ward. Those were the very middle class black neighborhoods where communities lived, okay? They were active, they voted. In fact, in the twentieth ward, we had three neighborhoods, Kingsway East, Kingsway West, Penrose and a little bit of Wells Goodfellow where the where the Snooks is. And we would vote three thousand five hundred for mayor's race, five thousand for governor's race and six thousand for the president's race. We were the highest voting ward for Democrats in the city and always one of the top three. Once the good people that live other places tore our communities up, we don't have that voting base anymore because our people left. Okay, because the things that they tell us that are good for us are not good for us. And people who got ways and means, how they vote is they leave the community. Okay, so when you see here that we're getting ready, and I wanted to just bring this attention. We're getting ready to have somebody who could say that they're a neighborhood organization, because I think this is going someplace. Why does? First of all, I want to know why neighborhood organizations have to be registered. Can you tell me any reason why they have to be registered? You've had, you've been part of, you've been a committee woman. You've been a, you work with neighborhood organizations in your community for years. Tell me what the upside of being registered means. I understand wanting to give notice to certain people, but right now, when we have conditional use hearings and we have Board of Judgment hearings, I have for years complained about they put that little sign on the post, it gets wet, somebody yanks it down, they say, that's all we can give you and you can't have anything else. You cannot have anything else. We can't do anything else. But yet here we have a neighborhood organization that they said that they can do something else. But the person who might live right next door to where they're getting ready to put something they don't want, they may not even get any notice because the, the city has told us for years, we can't do anything about that. Okay, and you come and say, nobody saw that. That, and they're like, well, that's what the law says. If it wraps around a pole or a tree and somebody takes it down, that's too bad. So here now I'm looking at, we get to give the neighborhood organizations more notice than we give the things that would be next to people's houses. So I'm just trying to find out in your long term association with neighborhood organizations, them being registered, did that have anything to do or help or, or not being registered, did that hinder them from doing their job? So I, I haven't worked with any that had to be registered. So I'm trying to figure out what the whole end game of this is.
But thank you, Alderwoman. It's not making sense to me because I agree with you with the NISs, they have enough issues within the department. I can't see them doing this. And I don't know who agreed to make this happen. They can't even take care of canvassing the wards to get the work done. And so now we giving them something else. And then the next thing is for me coming from the block unit movement, from the federation, as, and then as a committee woman and then as an Alderperson, I don't see the benefit of them registering their organization. It doesn't make sense to me. I don't see the benefit for that community because half the time the people don't even know who they are to have these organizations. And they don't even know the work that they're supposed to be doing. So we're kinda cutting our nose to spite our face. And so I'm one that can't support this because I feel like we're, we're tiring our hands and we're not, we're making it harder for the community. And I can't see Baden, North Riverfront and those neighborhoods and North Point and Walnut Park all coming together under one umbrella. I just, it's, it's not realistic to me. Maybe the sponsor on her side, it will be okay for her, but it wouldn't be okay in my neighborhood. So that's where I'm at.
And just what you said about neighborhood stabilization. So I was here since we had CONSERVE and that's where neighborhood stabilization came from, CONSERVE. And CONSERVE only had a few people. It didn't cover every neighbor, every neighborhood or every ward. Penrose had it in North St. Louis. It was like two or three neighborhoods that had it. And then Central Quarter had them, then a few in South St. Louis. And then when Freeman Bosley came, he gave everybody a neighborhood stabilization, but then it was called something else. It wasn't neighborhood stabilization. But it morphed into neighborhood stabilization and then neighborhood improvement. But just what you said about the Neighborhood Improvement Group right now, for the last, I want to say, seven, eight years, they have been a mess. It has been all kind of problems. I, I have watched and, and heard from the Neighborhood Stabilization Officers themselves about the racial strife that's in the, within the department. The inability of them, as you said, to even do to go through your neighborhood and find problems. There's been political games being played from within that organization. And so several of the directors have left under stress. We're being sued about that. So for us to then say, we're gonna send something to them to make a plan is a joke to me. Also, you said something about, they, something that your neighborhoods. When I've tried to have a ward meeting with all my neighborhoods, and this was even before it became that big, I found out very soon, not that the people don't care about it, but they have different needs. And so they don't want people coming in telling them about what's going on in another neighborhood when they're trying to get their point across about what's going on in their neighborhoods. And they also don't want people coming in who represent them, who do not know anything about them and saying that somehow they're their neighborhood organization because they've been able to register with the city. I think that's foolhardy. One of the things that the past administration used to do was to say, we're gonna take these surveys. And after a very short time, I got calls from all of the people, not all, but many of the people I represented saying, why are they doing all these surveys? We don't need them. Who said it? That's what we elected you from, for. Alderwoman, we elect you and then we can hold you accountable. When we start having all these other organizations, neighborhood organizations, then we don't have anybody to hold accountable. Right now, we changed the charter so that somebody that's not elected can now draw the wards up. That's gonna be funny because there's nobody to, uh, uh, hold accountable. I won't be here then, thank goodness. I will go away from this, but it is going to be a mess. So whoever thought of this idea of, oh, we're just going to register these people and we're gonna give them more say than the neighbors themselves, we're gonna make it so that they get to decide that, um, um, not that they get to decide, but they get to get notifications of things. They get to know, even if they're not within the neighborhoods, that they get notifications and they get this built up like this. It reminds me of when we used to have housing corporations all over North St. Louis and they were funded. And so then Frances Slay came in and said, uh, there's too many and they shouldn't be funded. And if you've been funded for a long time, we're gonna defund you. But you know what happened, Alderwoman from the thirteenth? They didn't defund the people from certain neighborhoods and they are still getting money to this day. But they undermined it. All of the people in North St. Louis and most of those organizations went down. And then they brought down people, they brought out people from other neighborhoods and said, and you and I already know, and I'm gonna say them out loud, oh, North Newstead now represents North St. Louis. No, they didn't. North Newstead came out of the twenty-first ward and they had certain boundaries. And then the next thing I know, they were perpetuating themselves to represent Penrose. I think they came over into Baden and to North Point and all those neighborhoods where they already had people that represented them. And so that's where I see this going. I see this as a very misguided attempt to make giant organizations that don't have anything to do with the neighborhoods themselves, except that they call themselves a neighborhood organization. And just one other question, Alderwoman, if you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so when you've been having problems with the Neighborhood Stabilization Office, because I know you have because you moved some people out. Okay, so what has been their answer when you've told them about the problems you've been having with just getting them to go out in your ward and find problems that you and I can drive by in two point five seconds and say, hey, you haven't cut the grass, you haven't done anything. How have they solved your problems, I guess, my question, since they're gonna come up with this great idea for us?
They have not, Alderwoman. My LA and myself have been the ones that's been addressing it. And so that's where the issues come.
Right. So then do you, I said one, but I got one more. So wouldn't it make sense to you, instead of saying, we're gonna pass this board bill and then we're gonna ask them to come and give us some ideas of how this could be? Wouldn't it make sense to you, if since they can do this thing, why wouldn't we just ask them to bring us a plan that they have? And then we can all look at their plan and say, is this a good idea or not? Should we do it this way? Instead of, we're gonna pass a board bill that's silly, that has all kind of holes in it, that's misguided. And then we're gonna let somebody, a department that's full of problems come up with a plan for us. Does that make any sense to you? Wouldn't it make more sense to, for them to submit to us what they want to do? And that could have been done with a resolution. We, the Board of Aldermen, send a resolution over and asking the Neighborhood Stabilization Officers, uh, office to come up with a plan of how we are going to have neighborhood organizations and then put that out there so everybody could see what the agenda was. And that way it would be easier for us to determine if this is a good idea or not. Thank you, Alderwoman. I appreciate you.
No problem.
If the Alderwoman, if the Alderwoman from the tenth would yield.
Would the Alderwoman from the tenth yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the twelfth?
Yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Alderwoman, you did send me this, so I thank you. I've had a family emergency, just got in late yesterday because of it, out of town. But I just still, one of the things that stuck out for me was, and you've heard me talk about it. But sometimes people who live in a little different part of the city maybe don't have the same issues. The reason I talked to the Alderwoman from the eleventh and the thirteenth is because we represent a lot more of North St. Louis. And so maybe you don't have these problems. But can you tell me the thought behind having a neighborhood organization be able to have more, have up to five city neighborhoods? And that there's no, and also the thought behind not requiring the people who want to have these things to live in the neighborhood itself?
Okay, I'm sorry. Let me just back up because there was a lot of misinformation, a lot of things that were mentioned in conversation that aren't in this, in this legislation. The residency is addressed in the application. I want to thank our Citizen Service Bureau, our NSD Department, our Neighborhood Stabilization Officers that have been doing an amazing job here, especially during this response to the tornado. They have been at the table during this.
Alderwoman from the twelfth, what is your point of order?
She can't, she has not answered my question. So either answer my question and I don't have anything to ask her. So either answer, what is the thought behind not having, having five city neighborhoods be represented? What is the point about not having residency in this legislation?
And to finish my thought, and to finish my thought, the residency, you can't apply to represent a neighborhood organization in a neighborhood that you don't live in. So that's where that is addressed. Second, again, our Citizen Service Bureau and our Neighborhood Stabilization Officers and our departments have been at the table.
Alderwoman from the tenth, are you no longer yielding?
I would yield as long as I want to because I want to correct the misinformation that's being. She wouldn't want to ask me questions because it would correct the stuff. So I understand.
All right. Alderwoman from the tenth, I'll recognize you after Alderwoman from the twelfth finishes her comments. Alderwoman from the twelfth, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. So I want to read again. A neighborhood organization, I stand in opposition to this legislation. I think this is another one of the many agendas that people come and don't tell the truth about what they're doing. Okay, so they come with this stuff and they think they're sliding it through. It doesn't work half of the time anyway. Our great rental thing ought to tell you something. After all that great rental things we were gonna do, we ended up with the very organization that I told you about, which was Legal Services. Because you didn't know what you were doing. I've been doing rental for a lot of years. We didn't know what we were doing. We just pushed it through and it didn't work. Because you actually have to listen to people who've been doing things and knowing. If you don't, you just come back and make mistakes. Here you're saying right here, section three, eligibility to register. Neighborhood organization is eligible to register if it satisfies the following, following minimum criteria. Residents from within its graphic boundaries represent the majority of its membership. It has a geographic boundary and those boundaries include not more than five city neighborhoods. So if you have five city neighborhoods, the residents cannot all be in five city neighborhoods. And in accordance, in accordance with the city neighborhood map maintained by the Planning and Urban Design Agency. Why in the world do you need to put five organizations? The point of neighborhood organizations are so you can have neighborhood organizations. You can have the Penrose Neighborhood Organization. You can have the Kingsway East and West, which is a joint neighborhood organization because it's a joint neighborhood. You can have the Ville Greaterville, which is a joint neighborhood because it's a joint neighborhood. But when you can have five different organizations and you say, well, in the application, it's gonna say that. Why don't you put the application up? Why don't you say what the rules would be? Why wouldn't you have asked them to present this to the Board of Aldermen? Instead of coming along and saying, well, I want to thank everybody and I want to thank Citizen Service Bureau and I want to thank the neighborhood organizations and I want to thank everybody. But you don't want to put the information before the members of the Board of Aldermen that makes sense for them to know. If you're gonna do a plan, you put the plan up first. Here's the plan. This is what we came up with. Now we can decide if we agree or disagree that this is a good plan. But to say, we're gonna pass this and we're gonna allow people to come together with five city neighborhoods and say that they now are a neighborhood organization. No, they're not. They're a ward. That's not that. That's so that people who live outside the neighborhood can register and have influence on a neighborhood, even if the neighborhood doesn't want it. If you want to represent five neighborhood organizations, run for office, run for office and become an Alderperson. Become a state rep, become a state senator, become the mayor, president of board, something like that. But you do not become a neighborhood organization with five neighborhoods together. That is something else. To wait and to present plans after the plans, after you pass legislation is foolhardy and it's gonna be a problem. It's gonna be a problem just like we had when we changed the ARPA funds. And that's why we were all across the news. And that's why we were all across the newspaper with all kind of conflicts of interest, because we changed ARPA funds. And that's why people only talk about the $37 million, not the 463, because we became so um, it's uh in a hurry to change what we already had, a good bill, that we messed it up, and forever people are gonna remember how we um governed with that ARPA money, how we, the lack of governance. And the mayor who was in, in, in charge at the time took a big toll on her, and that's why she's, one of the reasons she's not the mayor anymore. I'm gonna tell you again, I do not want to be part of anything, any eligibility to register, where you can put five neighborhoods. If that is what somebody wants, then eh, put that on the wards that are signed up. It's real easy, friendly amendment. All those people who support this wa, this bill, those are the wards that are included. Those who do not, do not include the 12th ward, do not include the 13th ward. You do not represent those wards. I cannot even look out for North Point, and I share Baden with the Alderwoman from the 13th, but I don't know what North Point needs more than Alderwoman from the 13th, or North Point's neighborhood. That makes no sense. This is somebody continuing to make things larger and larger, so that the smaller people are excluded. Uh, and so then to come up with a, a group of how you can register, or a list of how you can register later, makes no sense at all. This is a bad piece of legislation, it needs to be tabled. I don't suspect that you will, you will go ahead and vote for it anyway. It is a bad piece of legislation. And if you ask dysfunctional people, which neighborhood stabilization is dysfunctional. If you ask somebody dysfunctional to produce something, it's gonna be dysfunctional. And it's not just this group that's in here now, it's been dysfunctional for a while. Um, when I came back in 2013, they had a person who was one of the members, um, who five different Aldermen had kicked out of their wards, basically, and said, I can't work with this person, they don't do anything. When I, they gave them to me, I said, nope, I already know this person, and no, that person doesn't do anything. They agreed, so then they kept them for a long time. Another person falsified documents, um, and they kept them for a long time and then eased them out. They don't handle their business correctly. They're um not competent, many of them, and they have a racial problem in there. And I want to say that out loud again, they have a racial problem, and they have an inability to hire black neighborhood improvement specialists. And the ones that are there, many of them are very, very, very upset about how things are running. I've talked to this, so we have to say this on the floor, I'll say it. I've actually talked to the person who's in charge of Neighborhood Stabilization now. She knows my problems with it, she knows the political games that has been played with this organization. Um, there's documentation from some of the past people who used to be in charge of this, this group. This is not a group to write anything for the Board of Aldermen. They can present plans that should then have to become, should have to come back before the board if it's a good plan and adopt it. Not adopt a law and then tell them to go do something for us. That's not gonna be in the best interest of uh the neighborhoods. It's definitely not gonna be in the best interest of the neighborhoods that I represent. And they already fully have neighborhood organizations that they can look to. And when you get larger, that's when you get to be an Alderman or a state rep or a state senator. So um, I stand in opposition, there are several other things wrong with this, I think. But what is the point of having neighborhoods, and then you want to eradicate them? That is because we have a group of people who have an agenda that is not in the best interest of the city. And as you keep pushing these agendas forward, they will keep rejecting you when you go to the polls, and you will no longer be here. And then we can get down to the business of doing things that are in the best interest of our community. This is not a good piece of legislation. There's no reason to talk about, well, when you get to the application, then you can only, then we'll talk about uh uh residency. That should be addressed in this board bill. There should be a dread, there should not be five neighborhoods that can come together. They want to work together informally, but for them to be recognized as some kind of a neighborhood um that has some kind of power when they come to a meeting or something like that, because this is the neighborhood organization that represents five neighborhoods based on what? Based on exactly what? Based on that Slayco has a name, Urban League, which has never tried to do anything like this, but that Slayco often did this. And I've often been very disappointed with what they've been trying to do and the misinformation that they've done. And I don't want it's like, it would be, it's enough that they have neighborhood supposed representation, which doesn't end up being it, because when you ask the people, they don't know who they are. They, they don't have elections, they have the same people, and they mouth off what the people who live someplace else wants. And then they write letters that don't even come from their board. This is a mistake, this is a mistake, and I'm going to vote against it. And I would suggest to the sponsor that she tabled this and come up with a better idea, and ask the um Neighborhood Stabilization Officers or the, that whole uh department, tell them to submit something, let's see what they come up with. I tell you, it will not be good if it comes from them, somebody else might write something, but it will not be good, because they can't do the job that they're supposed to. And they admit they can't do it, and they haven't done it. And so, and, 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 and I heard the sponsor talk about Citizen Service Bureau. Citizen Service Bureau, and the Post Dispatch has these numbers, ask us, do others, talk about how long it takes to get things done in certain neighborhoods in the city versus other neighborhoods. And um, one of the prior directors actually did numbers about when people call from North St. Louis, how it takes two, three times, four times more to get the same thing done that you can't, you need to get done in the city and other parts. And then if it's a certain neighborhood, which an alderperson, that the mayor doesn't like, then that could even, and that happened under the prior administration. So they came and brought me numbers from the Post Dispatch to show how they wouldn't do stuff in my ward, because the mayor was upset with me, and that's dumb, because the people know that I want things done. And so when you're having other people not doing them, you're switching the Neighborhood Stabilization Officers around, you get them trained, they go to another neighborhood, and then they play the politics with it. This is not good, this is not how government is supposed to look, this is not a good piece of legislation. And um, just because you get up and want to thank somebody, it still doesn't make it good. This is a piece of legislation that has no business going any for, further forward. And if you want to make it for your ward, do it. And that's fine, if that's what you want. I do not want it for the 12th ward, I will not support it in any way, shape, or fo, uh form. And you've heard the 13th ward said she has problem with it. That's two-thirds of North St. Louis that you're not listening to, but you never do, because you just push through and say, we know what's better. That's a, the exact opposite of what representing wards is supposed to be about. Please, and I will ask you again, please do not pass this legislation. It is not a good piece of legislation, and it's not well thought out. And it's gonna be problematic, just as changing the ARPA funds were. I have no further statements. And I, I request a roll call on both 44 and 45.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. While I have sheets of notes uh and corrections uh from some of the things that were uh spoken today, I will respect my colleagues and their support, and just humbly renew this motion to pass this legislation and welcome any additional conversation and correction that I can help talk and walk you through. Most importantly, for the residents, for our constituents across the city, I never mentioned aside in any other conversation I had. Across the entire city. Um, so with that, I renew my motion that we perfect Board Bill 44.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 11th, that we perfect Board Bill 44. There's been a, for us for roll call, Madam Clerk, please call.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Norrion. Alderman Devotee. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
No.
Alderwoman Boy.
No.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Con. Alderman Devotee. 10 aye votes and 2 no votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th to perfect Board Bill number 44.
Board Bill 45 as amended in committee, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, President Green, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Sanier, Alderwoman Keys, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance requiring certain notices to be sent to relevant registered neighborhood organizations and authorizing additional communication with registered neighborhood organizations contained in the separability clause.
Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 45 as amended in committee.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we perfect Board Bill 45 as amended in committee.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we perfect Board Bill 45 as amended in committee. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I, I pray I never miss the opportunity to say thank you, especially publicly. So I thank all of the groups that I mentioned for, um, for the working groups and the work that they have done to get these pieces of legislation now uh onto our floor. These notifications um are empowering. It's just an email at the least. And for somebody like me, I don't take for granted that my constituents and my residents do trust me to give them the information, to supply them with what they need to be able to advocate for themselves. But as I'm in the position to be of access to others, I want to ensure that they can advocate things and be empowered for themselves just as much, whether I'm in this seat or not, it's not about gatekeep information. And, and legislation like this, and working groups that are working together intentionally on behalf of the greater good for their communities, voluntarily, may I mention. This, I think, is the, one of the things that we can pull our city together and forward, it's not about sides with this. It's about empowering and bringing our residents and our communities, our organizations, our neighborhoods together, so that we can work together and bring our city forward. So 45 as amended in committee, the one uh change we made in committee, which again, a lot of the things that were mentioned, were fully addressed in committee, in the committee hearing, and by representation, not by us, but by the people. Um, we just added one notification that uh we just mishapped on the table. And again, this is just at the least an email, but I see at the greater, more communication, open communication between our residents and their city government. Empowering them uh to be able to advocate on behalf of their neighborhoods and not having information used to mislead them, misinforming them, and in some cases, quite frankly, weaponized against them. And the lack of, so with that, I'm asking my colleagues for your continued support on 45 as amended in committee.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam President, members of the board, I rise in opposition uh to this board bill also, and find it just ridiculous, because for years, as I said, we have um had the argument about lack of notice to communities and residents uh regarding Board of Adjustment, uh regarding conditional use, regarding all kind of things, and was told, no, we could only do it because the state law requires this, we can't do it that way. So we posted on a tree, um, we posted on a, a street sign, it wraps around, it gets wet, the people don't know what's going on. Now we're gonna have these perfected na, uh neighborhood organizations in which the people will not live, because we're doing that whole thing of, we know better than what your elected officials or what you know who live close to it. We're gonna have other people register neighborhood organizations, um, that nobody selected to represent them, um, come in, and they're gonna get a notification about what's going on. I don't have a problem with them getting the notification, I have a problem that the other people don't get notifications, that you're leaving people out, that you're selecting that the people, a group of people who are gonna select who the preferred people are, are not people that live in our communities. These people who are gonna make that decision, they don't live in my community. They're not making the decision. And the people who live in my community have already made decisions about who represent them. But you continue to try, you're talking about weaponization, that's what this is. It's weaponization, it's a conflict of interest, it's representation without election, it's all the things that are bad with city government, and you don't hear it down here, but the people do here. It, it also leaves out, there are groups that are not so organized, but they're organized on certain things. You leave those people out. Good, if we're gonna give notifications, it's just an email, give it to, why don't we email the people when there is a uh conditional use? More than, more to the point, why don't we mail to them? When somebody wants a conditional use, or they want to be before the Board of Adjustment, they're asking to change a zoning law. They're asking to get an exception. So why don't we say, within 500 feet or 1,000 feet, that we make those people who want to change our laws mail to the people of surrounding, so that they would have actual notice, so they would not be dependent upon looking at if uh something is still posted on a tree or wrapped around a sign? Because we want to create a different group of people, because this is another agenda that has something to do with this. This is not an agenda for good neighborhoods. As I said before, good neighborhoods rise up when they need to, and they know how to do it without being favored by somebody from the city. The more you start to put this under structure like this, the more it has the ability to be uh manipulated and, and done a different way. So giving somebody notice in Shaw about what's happening in uh Kingsway East or West or Pinrolls does not help the neighborhood groups. It does not help the neighborhood, it does not help the residents. There is hardly anything that comes before this board that um you're trying to help the neighborhood. You're trying to, there's a group of people who want, who got an agenda that my neighborhood doesn't agree with. Don't agree with it, then told two of the gr, the members of the squad, they don't agree with it. There's one more member they're gonna get rid of, too. They don't agree with that agenda, they don't agree with housing, uh, 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 closing down the workhouse. They do not agree with putting boarding houses. They don't like uh, uh, the uh short-term rentals. This is all the stuff that has now been causing problems for, for us. They don't want it, but you keep pushing it through, not to make our neighborhoods better, but to weaken, weaken our neighborhoods and make them worse. And what happens is you keep making people leave the community. The black middle class left under a black female mayor because she was not representing their interests. And they stayed at home and didn't vote for her, and didn't like it. So the people who are telling you what they don't like, you don't want to hear it, you want to act like this is great. This is another agenda to create another tier that you can try to control and to cause problems. It is not to do what is in the best interest of the neighborhoods. They themselves can pick that. And to have five neighborhoods that can come together and say that they represent a neighborhood organization, they are not a neighborhood organization, they are something else. And they will act the same way that Neighborhood Stabilization Office has acted, which is improperly and unconscionable and um unprofessional. Thank you, and again, I renew my request for a roll call. I have no further statement.
Alderwoman from the 13th.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam President. Would the Alderwoman from the 10th uh answer a question for me, please?
The Alderwoman from the 10th yield, questioning from the Alderwoman from the 13th.
Sure.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Uh, first, let me apologize, because I had a whole piece to come to HUSS to tell you, to suggest not to move forward on these two bills, because it's my community, and I don't know if people realize it. I have people that's trying to take over neighborhoods in my community that don't look like us, that don't live in my community. And so that's why I was going to ask if you could hold off before we move forward on this bill, because I see what's going on in my communities. And so I think I'm asking you, have you thought about the impact it's gonna have in the communities in North St. Louis with this bill being passed?
Thank you, Alderwoman Boy. I say, I've thought about it across the city, as I listen to groups from across the entire city. I, I think I mentioned earlier that um legislation like this and communication and the empowerment that comes with this, um, I haven't talked about it by side, because that's the divisive, a very divisive pathway to get into this. And quite frankly, there are, uh, without being specific, members and neighborhoods and residents from the north side that have been at this working table since 2021, working on this to try to get it and noticing the gaps in their advocacy for their communities. I want to make sure that I publicly say it again and again, nobody from Shaw will be, and I'll just speak for myself. Nobody from Shaw. and I'll just speak for myself, nobody from Shaw neighborhood will be able to register themselves as a neighborhood organizer in Fountain Park, Lewis Place. That's not set up, there's no pathway, there's no possibility of opportunity for that in this legislation and in the way it reads and the way it was presented again in committee and the open conversations that I've had with colleagues that reached back out in response, understand that this is not a preferred thing or a priority thing. This is, these notifications, let's be honest, are public information. So whether we do this or not, whether we make this choice for our residents or not, they still can go and get this public information. What we are doing for our residents here, and it was noted by some of our colleagues that there are organizations that have challenges and capacity to get these notifications, it's creating a pathway for them, it's empowering for them. You have to be from your neighborhood, you have to have elections in your neighborhood, you have to have public meetings in your neighborhood, you have to be organizing your neighborhood to be able to get this, again, notification. This is not a vote. This is not an alderman's role. This is something that came organically from the community, organically from neighborhood organizations that felt like their voices were not being heard. And then sometimes, again, and it was stated in unfortunately some ways today, information may have been weaponized or withheld from them. And so this right here, Alderwoman Boy, for clarity for people that are watching, I think there's some overthinking, maybe is a good way to put it. This is not a vote, this is not influence, this is not somebody that could come and shut or start anything in a community. This is public information and public notification, and it's a pathway of communication for our residents, for our residents, that's it. And it's not political. And I think that's obvious in the way that it's in a department, but I know that for some, it's, they're more comfortable making people feel like they have to come through them. I'm not like that. I want to empower my constituents and residents, whether I'm in this seat or not, I want my constituents and residents to be able to advocate for themselves, fight for their communities, and move their communities forward, no matter who's in office. And notification and information is the first step on that, in that empowerment. So I thank you for your feedback, Alderwoman Boy. They can still send their opposition, just as we've noted, the opposition here today, but on behalf of the, again, countless organizations, people, working groups, neighbors in their communities, for their communities that have cried out for this for years, it only got derailed because of COVID and then it kind of got derailed because of the tornado. But now we're in a position again to do this for our residents today. And again, I welcome and appreciate and respect your feedback, but I will be trying, continue to try on behalf of them to move this board bill forward today.
And probably everybody, probably except for two alderpeople will vote for it, but I just want people to understand that what we're up against as alderpeople in North St. Louis, we have a bigger challenge than other alderpeople. And so people don't want to talk about the elephant in the room, but our city is more racially divided than it's ever been in the history of St. Louis. And so again, we are challenged because we have vultures coming after our communities to take them over. And I just think this is another way that they can do this. And you probably feeling it's not political and you probably feeling it's residence, but people need to be real clear that it's politicians that send residents to the tables to set the traps, to decline neighborhoods and destroy them. But I want it to be publicly known, I am just like Sam Moore, don't come in my neighborhood, stay out of my neighborhood, and we're going to take care of ourselves. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam President, members of the board, if the Alderwoman from the 13th would yield.
The Alderwoman from the 13th yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th.
Yes.
Thank you for the state, first of all, I want to thank you for your statements because we are racially divided and, you know, people, oh, it just says this, it just says that and it doesn't change. Do you remember when we had, we had an original COVID bill back in July and August of 2021? When we first got the ARPA money, we had an original bill that we passed when we had a different president. Do you remember that?
Right.
And then after the president and two others left our Board of Aldermen, we got this president here and we also had the current sponsor of this bill.
Point of order.
Alderwoman from the 10th, please state your point of order.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm trying to follow how the comments that are made now are germane to Board Bill 45 as amended.
Oh, we're getting ready to get to it right now, getting ready to get to it.
Alderwoman from the 12th, please state germane to the topic at hand, which is Board Bill 45.
It is about reliability and saying what, how things are just the way they say.
Alderwoman, you may continue, but please keep your comments germane.
It is going to be germane and we're getting to it. Then let me finish my question. Alderwoman from the 13th. So then this person, the 10th ward brought us a board bill that changed.
Point of order.
And so the way ARPA was done was changed and then we came and we.
Alderwoman from the 10th, please state your point of order.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'm just still trying to follow how this.
Alderwoman from the 12th. Alderwoman from the 10th is recognized on her point of order. Madam Clerk, could you please mute the Alderwoman from the 12th because the Alderwoman from the 10th has the floor? Alderwoman from the 10th, will you please state your point of order?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Still trying to follow how the comments that are being made at this time are germane to 45 as amended and would ask if they're not going in that direction if we can continue to stay on the perfection of Board Bill 45 as amended.
Alderwoman from the 12th, this is your second warning. We are not discussing ARPA at this time, we are discussing Board Bill 45 as amended in committee.
Madam President, point of order, point of order. You don't know where I was going because it didn't get any further and I was to the point that when you asked me to trust you, which is what you said.
Alderwoman from the 12th, what is your point of order?
My point of order is that you can't be making a ruling on that I didn't get to the question.
That's not a point of order, that's not a rule.
The question was, and so let me make it my proffer to you. The point is, is you're going to ask me to trust you, that it's going to be nothing, it's going to change, it's going to be a fair. And the Alderwoman from the 13th just told you, you can try to act like, oh, we don't talk about race, but race is involved. And in this case right here, you're going to tell me, oh, I'm going to change something, but it's going to, it's not going to affect. It is going to affect. I want to read, I want to ask the Alderwoman, where in this legislation does it say that Shaw could not be contained in a neighborhood of five groups?
Point of order.
Alderwoman from the 12th, are you asking, who are you directing your question to?
I was only talking to one person, the 13th. I just did you a point of order because you're ruling on something you didn't ever let get out because you didn't want the point made that I can't trust people who tell me to trust me and then do something different. So I still made the point.
Alderwoman from the 12th, we're just all trying to stick on topic. So if you have questions of the Alderwoman from the 13th, you may ask those questions of the Alderwoman of the 13th.
I am going, I'm going to tell you again, I am going back to asking the Alderwoman from the 13th about the board bill. That's what I was doing in the first place.
Alderwoman from the 13th, will you yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th?
We were in the middle of it, you didn't take it away, we still have the floor. We still have the floor.
Alderwoman, you may proceed, but please keep your comments germane.
My comments are germane, you cannot trust people who tell you to trust them and then change and don't tell you the truth. So that's my comment about that. And I was on to something else, every time you bring it up, I'm going to say that. So you should just let me go on because I'm going to continue to say it, I'll say it next week and the weekend, the weekend afterwards. So let me finish. So Alderwoman, in this board bill that we have been assured does not allow for other neighborhoods to come into and be part of something, when we get to.
It's not in 45. It's in 44.
When we get to it, what we have is a ability for people to come together, four or five neighborhoods, and then be part of some database registration, okay, right?
Rule 36, point of order.
Alderwoman from the 10th, please state your point of order.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I just don't want to confuse people who are watching. I think Alderwoman Tyus is referring to Board Bill 44 and we're on Board Bill 45 as.
Alderwoman from the 12th, if you could please make your comments toward Board Bill 45 as amended in committee, we have already voted on Board Bill 44.
And I wish you guys could read because 45 says, "An ordinance requiring certain sent to relevant registered neighborhoods." Okay, what are those relevant registered neighborhoods? So it is part of 45. Please learn to read, Alderwoman from the 10th and Madam President, that's the first thing it talks about. Can you read? So I'm talking about the relevant neighborhoods, which is part of this board bill.
She don't have a question to ask because the question was for 44, so now she looking for something.
No, I don't. I do, I'm waiting for the president to hear that the first thing, Board Bill Number 45 says, "An ordinance requiring certain notices be sent to registered neighborhoods." I'm talking about those registered neighborhoods, which is part of Board Bill 45. So I know the Alderwoman from the 10th wants to be able to read, so maybe she could go back to kindergarten and learn how to. Okay, anyway, as I was saying, Alderwoman from the 13th.
Alderwoman from the 12th, I am kindly going to ask you to please state in decorum, Board Bill 44 was about the creation of those.
I will ask you, Madam President.
Alderwoman from the 12th, I have the floor at the moment. You may listen to what I have to say or we will have to mute you. Madam Clerk, could you please mute Alderwoman from the 12th so that we may provide some clarification? So at this moment, I am asking Alderwoman from the 12th to please stay within decorum and not insult her other members of the Board of Aldermen. Board Bill 44, which we already voted on, is what created the registered neighborhood agreements. And now we are on Board Bill 45, which, Alderwoman from the 12th, I am explaining to you where we are in the agenda at the moment. Alderwoman from the 12th, you are going to tire yourself out here. Let's just calm down for one second so we can all get through this.
Point of order, point of order. I asked you for a point of order and I wanted.
I will recognize you on your point of order.
Does Board Bill 45 refer to relevant?
Yes. So Alderwoman from the 12th, I am responding to what you are, what you have been saying. Board Bill 44, which the Board of Aldermen already voted on, is what creates the registered neighborhood organizations. That is not what Board Bill 45 does. Board Bill 45 is simply about providing notification to those organizations. So at this point in time, we are asking you to please keep your comments germane to the notification of those organizations rather than the establishment of those organizations as that piece of legislation has already been perfected. So you may proceed on Board Bill 45 as amended in committee, which speaks directly to the notification requirements for sending notification to those registered neighborhood associations which were created in Board Bill 44 that was already perfected for. You may now proceed on Board Bill 45 as amended in committee.
I am going to proceed and then you should tell that to the Alderwoman for the 10th who stood up there and talked about it, but let's proceed because I'm still going to talk about relevant registered neighborhood organizations, which is part of Board Bill 45. An ordinance requiring certain notices to be sent to relevant registered neighborhood organizations and authorize an additional communication with relevant registered neighborhood organizations and containing a severability clause, okay? And it goes on to say what a city neighborhood notice is, what is a registered neighborhood organization? I would point out to the members of the board that if you look at page one of three, it defines registered neighborhood organizations. Is that correct or not, Madam President? Point of order, point of order, Madam President.
Please state your point of order.
My point of order is you're trying to act like that 45 does not address registered neighborhood organizations, but obviously you don't read the board bill.
Alderwoman from the 12th, you were still inquiring of Alderwoman of the 13th.
But you are trying to rule that I can't ask a question about the board bill, so we need to get this straight. In the board bill of 45, it speaks to registered neighborhood organizations, page one, line 16E.
Correct, and those registered neighborhood organizations were defined in Board Bill 44, which previously was perfected.
You don't know what my question was because you keep trying to override it, but you're not going to because it is part of the board bill and I'm going to talk about it because it's part of.
Alderwoman from the 12th, you need to be directing your questions to the Alderwoman from the 13th unless you no longer have questions.
You're interrupting me so I can and stop acting like that it doesn't refer to registered neighborhood organizations because it does. Alderwoman from the 13th. Thank you very much. As I was talking about, the registered neighborhood organizations means an organization listed in a registration database produced and maintained by the Neighborhood Stabilization Division as part of the city's registered neighborhood organization program. And that neighborhood, registered neighborhood organization can mean up to, let's see here, five organizations. And then it says, we're going to send them a notice, okay? So you just said, and I put my hand up because you specifically said you were going to talk to the Alderwoman of the 13th about holding those board bills because you had concern about the people coming into the 13th ward to take over your community. Is that what you said?
Correct.
Right, okay. And I've had the same concern with neighborhood organizations and that's why I want to know why they all of a sudden had to be registered because I've had the same and especially now I'm hearing that from my neighborhoods and from all over about with this tornado touching down, the thing that I've heard from many groups, from black lawyers, doctors, people who have owned neighborhoods, housing in the community, is about they don't want outsiders coming in and taking over the neighborhood, buying up property and telling people what to do, okay? And that they would prefer that that not happen because that's going to be predatory on our community. Is that what has been happening, right? We already been experiencing this in ways that other people maybe don't understand. So when you get, when you get a registered neighborhood organization that can be up to five different neighborhoods listed in the registration, does it say anyplace in here that you can see in Board Bill 45 that the registered neighborhood organizations cannot be people outside of the neighborhood organization? I'm looking for that because I can't find it. So I'm hoping that maybe you can tell me if it says that anyplace.
I didn't see it when I read the bill.
Okay, and so I hadn't talked to you before today about your concerns about this bill, had I?
No, I haven't talked.
Okay, so, right, okay, so we came up with some of the same concerns because we've been representing our neighborhoods for a long time and we know the concerns of the neighborhoods, right?
Right.
And are you taking the position as the Alderwoman from the 10th said about that we don't want people to have information and we want it only to go through us? Is that a position you're taking?
No.
And it's not a position that I'm taking either. In fact, you and I've had conversations about when they put notices out, how they don't, they'll put it on a tree or they'll put it on a pole and then it gets wet or it's pulled off and the people don't know anything about the hearing and not at all. We've talked about that, right?
Right, or the business will pop up and they're trying to figure out how to get there.
Correct. So my whole point about this neighborhood notification is that if we're going to be able to do neighborhood notifications based on a group that you and I both don't have any trust or faith in, then how come? then how come you can't do neighborhood notifications for the rest of the community in the same way? If you can send emails to this particular set of sainted people, why wouldn't you be able to do that, um, for the rest of the organization? That's what I'm saying. And, and especially when you express a concern about outsiders that don't look like you, is what you said, coming into the neighborhood takeover, right?
Correct.
So do you see anything in here that would, why they get a certain neighborhood notice when other people cannot get a neighborhood notice? How will we explain to our community that they who live right around something cannot get a email saying, hey, this is about to happen? But a registered neighborhood group can get an email about it? Can, can you explain why they have more rights than the people who live right around a community?
No, that was the challenge for me. I couldn't, it seemed like we were leaving people out of the process.
Correct. Exactly. So we got, it's not that we don't want people in the process. Good, notify. But also notify the other people who live in the community. If we can do this, we can do this widespread, okay? And, uh, so my other thing is that, um, again, it talked about who's gonna, um, let me see here, where is it? Neighborhood notice means a notice that affects an address or parcel within or in an area up to two hundred feet outside and adjacent to the geographic boundaries of registered neighborhood organizations that include the date, time, and place of any public hearing or meeting relating to the notice. So if other people want to get that notice, why shouldn't they be able to sign up and get that same notice, whether they're registered or not? There, would that be a problem? Because wouldn't that be the best way to make sure everybody gets to have a notice? Who would be opposed to that?
The goal should be to get as many people as possible the information.
Correct. Correct. And then what I want to also point out, it says, "The notice shall be within five days of production of the notice, um, can be provided to the neighborhood." But then it goes on, which is so interesting. Um, where is page two or three? It goes on to say that. Got my pages mixed up, two or three. Failure of a city agency to provide a neighborhood notice to a registered neighborhood organization pursuant to this section should not constitute a violation of this ordinance, should not result in any penalty or liability, and shall not invalidate, delay, or otherwise affect the validity or enforcement of any decision, determination, or action taken by the city. So while we're saying we're gonna give them a notification, we then go on to say that under section two's paragraph D, that if the people, the neighborhoods, don't get any notification, so what, basically is what that says. So what's the point of having a requirement? And then you say, but if you don't get it? Now, let me say it again. It says, "Failure of a city's agency to provide a neighborhood notice to a registered neighborhood organization pursuant to this section shall not constitute a violation of this ordinance, shall not result in any penalty or liability, and shall not invalidate, delay, or otherwise affect the validity of enforceability of any decision, determination, or action taken by the city agency." So while we require a notification in one hand, maybe you can explain it. And then saying, but if we don't give it to you, so what? Can you explain that to me? Because maybe I'm missing something here.
No, I'm not, you're not missing anything. I'm missing it.
Okay, we made all this big thing about we're, look what we're doing. We're gonna make sure that people have notice. And then we say, but if we don't, oh, well, we don't care. That's why I say there has to be something else going on with this, okay? Um. I had another question. Oh, and it says, "Registered neighborhood organization means an organization listed in the registration database produced and maintained by the Neighborhood Stabilization Division as a part of the city's registered neighborhood organization program." So the people that cannot canvass your community are gonna keep a database and decide who stays in it and who stays out of it. And what happens if they don't? If you, um, become a neighborhood organization, and they don't, uh, maintain it, or they don't add you into it? Let me say again. Nothing happens. Nothing. You don't get to say, I didn't get notice. In court, if people don't get notice, then you can go and file actions and writs and all kind of things that you can do. But in this case, we're gonna pass legislation that says, "Failure of a city agency to provide a neighborhood notice to a registered neighborhood organization pursuant to this section shall not constitute a violation of this ordinance." If it doesn't violate the ordinance, why are we requiring a notice? I don't understand that. That makes no sense. That is not a violation of the ordinance. What is the, the president just told me that this was about notice. She said I was out of, I didn't have decorum. I was talking about things that I shouldn't be talking about. But if anybody reads this, anybody out there? Because the Alderwoman from the tenth always talks about people, listen. Listen to this. You're not getting anything. If they don't do it, so what? The only thing they're doing is gathering your data. But there's no penalty clause. When you have good legislation, there are penalty clauses when things don't happen. But this one specifically exempts them out, and then goes on to say, um, "If any part of this ordinance shall be held to be invalid or unenforceable, the remainder hereof shall be valid in all other respects." And we always usually have a severability clause, except for when you, you don't have to have them. In fact, you can have a clause that says, "If any part is not found to be relevant or forcible, that all of this is found to be enforceable." We call it poison pen or other things. So I don't understand why we require a notice. We define the city. We define the city agencies. We define the notices in here. We define the neighborhood notice. We define the registered neighborhood organization. And says that the city agency that shall produce a notice within five business days of production of this notice, uh, provide or cause to be provided a neighborhood notice to any registered neighborhood organization in which the notice applies, a notice applies to a registered neighborhood organization if it affects and addresses a parcel within or in the area up to two hundred feet outside of it and adjacent in its geographic boundaries. And it says, "Every city agency shall peer, over period, review the registration database and include in any of its community engagement activities any registered neighborhood organization with, with geographic boundaries that include any neighborhoods that are being targeted in its community engagement activities. In addition to providing neighborhood notices, a city may, as it sees procedures that involve other communities with registered neighborhood, other communications, I'm sorry, with registered neighborhood organizations. And no event may such city agency charge a fee to registered neighborhood organizations for participation in any such additional practice or procedure. It may develop policies and procedures for these neighborhood organizations." Um, but it may not. So I don't understand this. This is a piece of garbage legislation, for real. It's not really a good piece of legislation. It doesn't have anything, um, it's not fair. It gets, goes to the heart of having neighborhood organizations that rise up around, it may be one issue. It may be several issues. But everything we've done down here for those people who have been so hell-bent on participation and making sure people participate is the opposite. When it comes out, it is the opposite of what they are telling you. It's why I don't trust the things they're doing. But when I see that you say, um, that when all of this is done and said, "If you don't do what this ordinance says, nothing, there shall not result any penalty or liability, and shall not invalidate, invalidate, delay, or otherwise affect the validity or enforcement of any decision, determination, or action taken by the city agency." Then the neighborhood organizations, you have no power. The non-registered neighborhood organizations, they're trying to put you at a, below of the people who are registered, which you are not. And this is not a good piece of legislation. And it does beckon people who do not belong in our neighborhoods to come in and try to take over. And it's not something I want to say, Alderwoman, that you and I think, that it's a lot of people in the community that are speaking to this right now. And we've seen it happen over and over again. And I've had it in my neighborhood when somebody who did not belong in the neighborhood came and tried to tell me that they belonged to a neighborhood group. And when I questioned them, they got off the link and then put somebody else on the link, because they did not belong to the neighborhood and did not have anything to do with the neighborhood, but wanted to run it. And I still actually have that email and will, um, be providing it to some people to show that what you're saying is not a suspect. It's always been a neighborhood. It's why neighborhoods are concerned, like ours, about zoning laws, because people push things into our neighborhoods that we don't want to happen, that people have, people show up. As you said, they send people to be head of those organizations, and then they say they're the head of the organizations, and they don't represent any such thing. And I'm going to be anxious to hear what Neighborhood Stabilization brings up, uh, that can overturn an ordinance that says, "If they don't do it, so what?" Nothing happens. I've never, that's like me saying, I'm gonna pay you. Come work for me for eight hours, and I'm gonna pay you. But now if I don't pay you, you can't sue me, you can't do anything, because I asked you to come work for me, but there's nothing behind it. This is not good legislation. And, um, it wouldn't be good legislation if it didn't have that wording in it. It is not for the neighborhoods that I represent. If other people want it, put it that way. But it's a piece of garbage legislation. And they ought to be ashamed of themselves, whoever wrote this, to say nothing happens if, if you don't get the notice. Then don't fill people full of explications, and then you don't give them a notice, and you don't have anything that says, well, you have to have this heard over again, or something happens. But to say nothing happens, oh, well, you just didn't get it. That's foolish to me, and it's gonna be wrought with problems. And I, uh, request a roll call.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Again, the prior bill, I welcome any conversation to refute a lot of the misinformation, um, that was just shared. I will speak specifically to section two, part D, that came directly from the city council's office and the work that they, um, did to help get this bill, um, again, to our floor today. I thank them for that. Um, it speaks to the decision not sending the email, not sending the notification. Nobody that has gone into years of work to empower our residents this way is saying, we're not gonna do this. You don't work this hard to not do it. This is, again, about empowering our neighborhoods. Communication cannot take over a neighborhood. But we can just go back to say it's voluntary. So if there are neighborhoods watching that don't want this, that don't want to be a part of this, you don't have to be. But there are absolutely neighborhoods across the city that can use this tool, that can use this tool to help them advocate for their neighborhoods in ways that they haven't been able to before. And there were a lot of things that were words that were put in my mouth. I'm glad these meetings are being shared live and recorded, and I can go back and I'll be able to explain it. But again, out of respect for my colleagues' time, I won't go off into those. Again, just welcome the conversation. Welcome you to speak with not me. Because again, this is for our people. I welcome you to talk to the working groups. They welcome the opportunity to come and talk to your neighborhoods. And with that, uh, I renew my motion to perfect Board Bill forty-five as amended.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we perfect Board Bill forty-five as amended in committee. There's been a request for roll call. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Ryan. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velasquez. Alderwoman Sanye. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. No. Alderwoman Boyd.
No.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Con. Alderman Devote. Eleven aye votes and two no votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the tenth to perfect Board Bill forty-five as amended in committee.
Board Bill twenty-five, committee sub as amended in committee, sponsored by Alderman Con and President Green. An ordinance amended title eighteen, Airports and Aviation Code of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis, to add a new chapter pertaining to rental car operations at St. Louis Lambert Airport, containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the third, you are recognized on Board Bill twenty-five, committee substitute as amended in.
Thank you, Madam President. I request that Board Bill twenty-five, committee substitute, is amped, get placed on the informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted. That's the extent of Board Bills for perfection.
Report of engrossment.
Board Bill fifteen, thirty-two, thirty-eight, seventeen, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, and nineteen.
Third reading and final passage of Board Bill's consent.
Board Bill fifteen, thirty-two, thirty-eight, seventeen, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the third reading, final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderperson from the seventh, that we adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar. Is there a discussion? Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Madam President, I would request that Board Bill number thirty-seven, uh, be, uh, let me see, thirty-seven and thirty-six be removed from the consent calendar and put on the third reading calendar, please.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderperson from the seventh, that we adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bills on the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Ryan. Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velasquez. Alderwoman Sanye. Alderman Browning.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Boyd. Twelve aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the tenth to third reading, finally pass the, mention, third reading and final passage of Board Bills.
Board Bill nineteen, sponsored by Alderman Aldridge, an ordinance approving the petition of an owner of certain real property to establish the Community Improvement District, establishing the Jefferson Arms, Community Improvement District, finding a public purpose for the establishment of the Jefferson Arms CID, authorizing the execution of a transportation project agreement between the city and Jefferson Arms Transportation Development District, prescribing the form and details of said agreement, making certain findings with respect thereto authorizing other related actions in connection with the TDD project containing an emergency and a severability clause.
Alderman from the fourteenth, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill nineteen.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Uh, voting on the bailing side, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, we reconsider Board Bill nineteen to go back to perfection calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the Alderperson from the first, that we send Board Bill nineteen back to the regular perfection calendar. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.[1750.02]
Aide.
Alderman Con.
Aide.
Alderman Ryan.
Aide.
Alderman Devote. Alderwoman Velasquez.
Aide.
Alderwoman Sanier.
Aide.
Alderman Browning.
Aide.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aide.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aide.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aide.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aide.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aide.
President Green.
Aide.
Alderman Devote.
There we go.
Alderwoman Velasquez.
Aide.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aide.
Eleven aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderman from the 14th to place Board Bill 19 back on the regular perfection calendar. With that, I will go back to the regular perfection calendar at this time and recognize Alderman from the 14th on Board Bill 19.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'd like to put Board Bill 19 on the informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, if you could, please make note of that.
So noted.
And with that, we can go back to the third reading and final passage of Board.
Board Bill 36, sponsored by Alderman Con, President Green, and Alderwoman Switzer. An ordinance pertaining, pertaining to the Transit Sales Tax imposed pursuant to Section 94.660, Revised Statutes of Missouri, as adopted by the voters of the City of St. Louis on August 2, 1994, pursuant to ordinance number 63168, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the treasurer of the City of St. Louis to deposit funds pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account 1, appropriating $13,657,000 from the said sales tax for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026, to the Bi-State Development Agency for certain purposes contained a severability and emergency clause.
Alderman from the 3rd, you are recognized on Board Bill 36.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we, are we on perfection?
Third reading and final passage.
Third reading, final passage. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 36.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 36. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. The Board Bill 36 is related to the public transit sales tax and the appropriation of one of the revenue streams to Metro for the operations of Metro Transit and would ask for folks' favorable consideration.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderman from the 3rd, you are recognized, close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alder.
Point of order.
Alderman from the 14th, please state your point of order.
I'm looking for the rule number, but before we do a vote, I believe our rule state, we cannot participate if we are driving in a vehicle. And I believe the Alderwoman of the 13th looks to be driving.
Correct. So Madam Clerk, Alderwoman from the 13th is ineligible to vote as long as she is driving a vehicle. If she pulls over, she may vote.
Excuse me, I am pulled over port.
Okay, you need to put your camera on so we can see that. Alder, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aide.
Alderman Con.
Aide.
Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Odenberg.
Aide.
Alderman Con.
Aide.
Alderman Ryan.
Aide.
Alderman Devote.
Aide.
Alderwoman Velasquez.
Aide.
Alderwoman Sanier.
Aide.
Alderman Browning.
Aide.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aide.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aide.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aide.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aide.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aide.
President Green.
Aide.
Alderman Devote.
Aide.
Alderwoman Tyus. Twelve aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 3rd to third reading and finally pass Board Bill 36.
Board Bill 37, sponsored by Alderman Con, President Green, and Alderwoman Switzer. An ordinance pertaining to the Transit Sales Tax imposed pursuant to Section 94.660, Revised Statutes of Missouri, as adopted by the voters of the St. Louis City on November 4, 1997, pursuant to ordinance number 64111, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the treasurer of the City of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account 2, appropriating $13,657,000 from the said sales tax for the period of through June 30, 2026, to the Bi-State Development Agency for certain purposes contained a severability and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 3rd, you are recognized on Board Bill 37.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 37.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 37. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. This is similar to Board Bill 36 and it's just coming from a separate revenue stream. It's a same appropriation, just a different revenue stream.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 37. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aide.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aide.
Alderman Con.
Aide.
Alderman Ryan.
Aide.
Alderman Devote.
Aide.
Alderwoman Velasquez.
Aide.
Alderwoman Sanier.
Aide.
Alderman Browning.
Aide.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aide.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aide.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aide.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aide.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aide.
President Green.
Aide.
Alderman Devote.
Aide.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aide.
Alderwoman Boyd. Eleven aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion, the Alderman from the 3rd, to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bill. Report is finally passed and signed by the President.
Board Bill 15, 32, 38, 17, 35, 36, and 37.
All other business being suspended, the President shall in open session affix her signature here to the end that these may become law.
We have none.
Alderman from the 4th, you are recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolution 51.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we suspend the rules for the introduction of Resolution Number 51.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 4th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 10th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 51. This is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aide.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aide.
Alderman Con.
Aide.
Alderman Ryan.
Aide.
Alderman Devote.
Aide.
Alderwoman Velasquez.
Aide.
Alderwoman Sanier.
Aide.
Alderman Browning.
Aide.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aide.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aide.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aide.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aide.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aide.
President Green.
Aide.
Alderman Devote.
Aide.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aide.
Alderwoman Boyd. Ten aye votes and one no vote.
Please place Resolution Number 51 on the first reading resolutions in reference to committees.
So noted.
First reading resolutions in reference to committees.
Unexpended crime prevention program.
Alderwoman from the 11th. Madam Clerk, if you could please add Alderwoman from 11th as a co-sponsor to Resolution 51.
So noted.
Alderman from the 4th, you may proceed on Resolution 51.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we refer Resolution 51 to public safety.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 4th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we send Resolution 51 to the Public Safety Committee. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aide.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading resolutions in reference to committee.
Second reading resolutions, committee reports and adoption.
We have none.
Can dispense with line item 23, courtesy resolutions.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 24, miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 25, announcements.
Thursday, July 10. Health and Human Development will have a webinar at 9:00 a.m. Personnel will have a webinar at 11:00 a.m. Public Safety will have a hearing in the Kennedy Room at 2:00 p.m. Friday, July 11. Legislation and Rules will have a hearing in the Kennedy Room at 9:00 a.m. Full board meeting in the chambers at 10:00 a.m. That's the extent of the announcement.
Any further announcements? Any further announcement? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we excuse the Alderman from the 5th for necessary absence.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we excuse the Alderman from the 5th for necessary absence. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aide.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn until Friday, July 11, 2025, in the Board of Aldermen Chambers at 10:00 a.m.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the[1757.07]